Check one, check two, check three, check four.
One, two, three, four.
Check two, check three, check four. Check one, 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 check two, check three, check four.
I amaze myself like at your own time.
Yeah, so I'm following gasoline.
My gas?
My gasoline and justice.
I wonder what that was when I came by.
Yeah, they have the whole block closed up, I guess. Yeah, they weren't allowing anybody to.
Yeah, look, I know we're trying to change the jail. And you did, did they evacuate?
Yeah, but they didn't, they weren't letting employees drive their cars. So nobody can leave.
So the inmates are in where? Because you know where they thought they were.
You guys hear that?
Yeah, it just. If you're a county employee. As the state. It's all competition.
So I.
I'm a county employee.
Uh, in your question, I'm not getting those texts.
Me either, and I'd get.
Where do I go to sign for those studies?
Is that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Um. I'd like to go ahead and call to order the continued budget work session from last week. Um, we have all council members here present except for. Counselor Munson, she should be joining us virtually at some point and, oh, is she? Great. Great. So now we have all counselors, um, except Cheryl here in the Nat U Hill Room and Counselor Munson is. On Zoom. Let's move to adoption of our agenda. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to? Add or remove from our agenda? All right. In that case, we will move forward and I just want to remind everyone that, um. This is still budget review session time and it is not a final approval. Of any of the departmental or office budgets. It's, um, not a formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October third at five thirty P M. And the budget final adoption will occur on Tuesday, October seventeenth at five thirty P M. The public, um, can make comments, um, regarding our budget during those meetings. Um, and we have a, a lot of cleaning up to do in addition to some of our regular, uh, business. Um, for departments who are presenting their budget, um, they'll be asked to come up and, uh, have. A little bit of a expl- give a little bit of an explanation as to any increases, decreases, or additions. And then council members will have the opportunity to ask questions and they can make recommendations to increase or decrease the account lines based on that discussion. Or the need of the department. Um, we do. Hope to keep things on topic, so if conversation strays away from, uh, items germane to the twenty twenty four budget, we. Reserve the right to put those on a future agenda for the council. Um, so without further ado and belaboring, I'm going to, um. Well, first of all, I want to say a couple of things. We are having this budget session, um, because a lot of. A lot of challenges are in front of us with respect to, um.
Back.
Staff that are, that, um, whose salaries just aren't really keeping pace with.
Back.
And other, um. Other expenses that folks have, we, you know, Monroe County is a beautiful place to live and we want people to be able to live in the county. And to that end, we're really going through every budget with a fine tooth comb and looking for. Ways in which we can get the biggest COLA, cost of living adjustment for our employees possible. Normally, we have five budget review sessions and that's pretty good and, and we can figure it out from there, um, at our regular session meeting, but it. Became apparent last week that we would need a sixth session and at the last minute in county government timeframes. Uh, we scheduled this meeting, which is preventing us from attending a community conversation that was. Recently scheduled to talk about the jail location. Um. So the second of those two scheduled jail site, community conversations. Is scheduled for this coming Sunday and I hope that as many of us as possible are able to participate in that second one. It's an important topic. And, um, I know that we all want to hear from the local community. Um, the second thing is that I'd like to acknowledge that right now we're having a bit of a. Emergency in our jail and parking garage area. There's a gas leak that's preventing. County employees who use that garage, um, and others right there in that immediate area from going about their business. And getting in their cars and going home. So I know that, um, county officials and emergency responders are working hard to fix that problem and. I'm hopeful that they'll be able to, um, do that without any, um, danger or. Damage to the public or any of our infrastructure as well. Um. The last update I heard was that they were finding alternative ways of getting folks where they needed to be. So I appreciate that. Um, but wanted to acknowledge that there's a lot going on outside this room. That, um, folks are, are thinking about and hoping for the best for. Now, I will let us proceed to what is item number four on our, um, budget, uh, agenda here. And that is overview of expenditures and revenues and I'm wondering. If Kim, uh, Shell, would you be willing to give us a little bit of an update on the changes since our last review session?
Uh, yes, I can, and, um, I'd like to share my screen, so I'm going to display it's, um. A copy of what we call the draft four B. Um, I have gone through, Courtney has helped me, we have, uh, updated with all of the changes. We went back. And ensured that we captured all of the changes that you guys mentioned last week. Um, so. Um, our general fund estimated budget request now sits at forty six million, five oh nine, six fifty five. Uh, we also made changes with regards to, uh, public safety lit. And that is three million, nine forty eight, one ninety eight. Um, that was from last. Week, those changes, so, um, everything else has, uh, remained the same. And I do anticipate more changes after tonight, so we will be updating that. Um, and that's all I have with regards to updates from last week.
Great, thank you. Are there questions or comments, uh, Counselor Iverson and then Councilman McKim?
Yeah, I think this is a good time to point out that, uh, on the net twenty twenty four revenue line for the total frozen levy. That number right now is a negative four hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred ninety seven dollars. However, when we started the process. That was almost negative two million dollars. And the reason why that has come so much closer down to zero is because so many. Uh, departments, uh, reduced their budgets so that, uh, we can, uh, make sure that we're taking care of our employees. So I just, uh, that should be pointed out.
Thank you. Bye.
And, uh, unfortunately, what I'm gonna say is probably gonna bring that no, that number in the wrong direction, but, um, this is on the, uh, the property tax levy. Uh. Uh, I remember what, we had discussed this earlier that, um, I was thinking that the. Property tax levy was probably showing a little bit high and I know, um, Ms. Gregory, you sent out an email from the D L G F that I think clarified. That issue a little bit today. Uh, and so are, are, are you in agreement that we could, we, we're probably gonna need to take that general fund levy down around?
Are you referring to the mental health?
Well, that, that was the, the nature of the question, but.
Yes.
That basically that we can't use that ceiling for anything else, so our.
We tried, we tried our hardest.
Okay, so I, I would recommend that we just in our, in our numbers that we're, uh, we're using here that we back that number down, uh, for the general fund. I mean, it'll, it'll reduce it by about two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, but I'd like to be noted that we are trying everything we can for employees to get the, to help them get the raises.
I'm all in favor of the raises, fully. I am fully in support. I just wanna make sure we.
Just have to keep it.
Accurate.
Yeah, I'm on board. All right. So you're saying, um, instead of four thirteen, three ninety seven, it's gonna be more.
Let me.
Oh, I see where you are.
It's always good to be a, a little bit high. I know that, that's, as the auditors pointed out, we usually lose some in the, uh, in the rounding. Um. So yeah, I, I just adjusted that number to where I think it's more accurate.
And what are your adjustments showing? Cause we're looking at a different screen.
Uh, I have a copy, so you'll have to share your screen, cause I can't get to Dropbox, so.
Literally, all, well, all I did is see that property tax levy number there.
Right there.
Yeah, just change it to the number that's above it.
Whoops.
Cause that number above it is just adding four percent to the previous.
Change that one there.
Yeah, just make it two, one, one, five, three, four, two, one. And then.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, you could actually bump it up.
The three and four are transposed.
Oh, I see that.
Six. We'll probably move it, let's see, another.
Yes.
If you moved it, if you changed that one fifty three to two fifty three. See, two, one, two, five, three. Try that.
Let me line.
What? Cause, because we don't wanna leave a whole bunch of money on the table. You see where the, the orange number is at four percent over the previous year?
Mm-hmm.
And we're under that now. We don't wanna be under, we wanna be a little bit over. So if you choose that, change that two, one, two, five.
Got it.
Change it to two, one.
Two, five, three. I've moved the, no, 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 not, not that one, not, no, no. Sorry.
Back in the. Is that editing the property?
F twenty, go to F twenty.
Mm-hmm.
And change that to two, one, two, five, three.
And then.
Four, two, one.
Four, two, one.
And you see there, um, now we're still a little under. It's, it's good enough for.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, it's just an estimate, it's not, you know, the auditor's, the auditor's just gonna advertise high anyway.
So, yeah, so we're looking at. That bottom, bottom line. Six sixty seven number there and that, so we think of it as like a seven hundred thousand.
Deficit.
The.
Got it. Okay. Hi, Auditor Smith.
Now that you heard the little bit of bad news, we have some good news. Uh. Bree hat, Bree has been putting on her strategy hat and we have worked possibly out a strategy, um, to maybe not just recoup that, but even more. And I'd like her to take a minute while you have this exact discussion to explain that, if you don't mind. You mind?
Go right ahead.
Well, we've been discussing this a little while, a little bit now, and I've sent you the information, um, today, the, um, just about. Uh, budgeting items in ARPA, expenses in ARPA that are eligible. So obviously this would, you know, take some teamwork between the commissioners and the council. However. There definitely is a possibility there and I sent you all the information, but we can discuss a little bit more thoroughly if you'd like.
Please. Would, would you be willing to just give us an, um. Like, uh, the highlights of that, cause I have to admit that I hadn't, I saw that you emailed me.
No, I completely understand. Um, I did it as fast as I could. Um, no, absolutely. Um, so yes, paving is an eligible expense. There are some hoops. Um, as always with federal money, but we can definitely make that happen. I have the, um, I actually spoke with the highway director. She agreed. We can meet all the requirements, so we're great there. So if you would like to budget, um, you know, paving in our bus can be like project by project, but that will work well. Um, another item is. We'll have to bid.
Could you, could you restate that a little slower and louder? I cannot hear in this room to save my life right now.
Sure. I do talk quickly.
Well, it's not your, it's these microphones that are dying on us.
Okay, so regarding paving, um, I went through that with our outside consultant and I also spoke with highway director Lisa Ridge. We will be able to meet all the requirements under ARPA, um, and if we budget paving, um, some paving projects in ARPA.
Okay.
Um, another, um, confirmation I received is at least the twenty twenty four portion. Of the mental health services contract for the correctional facility. We can make that work as well. Now it will require a little bit of extra effort. As is required with federal dollars. Um, we'll have to bid it out and, you know, go through the procurement process. However, um, it is definitely possible, um, it fits perfectly. Um, now also, uh. Um, your attorney has reached out to advanced correctional to determine whether or not we've already gone through a bidding process. Now, if we have, if we've already gone through a procurement process, we could also potentially correct twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three's mental health expenses. If the electeds are, you know, interested in doing so, so that would free up quite a bit of cash. And then, and it's a great use of ARPA. I mean, it fits perfectly with that program. So, um, I've also reached out to our, um, outside auditors that do our yearly audit, just to ensure, um. You know, they're on board with, um. The mental health portion of that correctional facility contract. We know it's good for twenty twenty four, but if they wouldn't take audit exception to, um, continuing a long-term contract. And, um, allowing the twenty twenty two and twenty thirty three without the procurement, we might have a green light there as well. So I haven't received. That feedback yet, but I'm waiting. And then, um, finally, some of the Sophia Travis grants are also eligible. Um, I went through the twenty twenty three list and of course you haven't done twenty twenty four yet, so just a possibility there.
Councilman McKim?
I, I guess, um. That, that, that's great. And that, that was great information. I appreciated your memo earlier. Um. I also think we need to consider being, uh, using some of the opioid settlement money for, I mean, a number of things, but one thing we could, I, we can definitely use it for. Uh, the restricted part is for the, uh, part, portion of the jail medical contract that is specifically related to substance use. We know we've added one position in that contract that's specific to substance use. We've had another one with mental health. I think we should strongly consider using, uh, at least paying for that amount that, that those two positions represents, uh, out of the restricted portion of opioid. And I know you've been doing a lot of research on where we are on the, uh, on the opioid funding. But ha- have we gotten to the point where, eh, what we've actually received agrees with what the state website says, or are we still off?
There's still some questions that we're trying to work through, so I, as soon as I have an update, I will share.
Thank you.
Counselor Hock?
Uh, also, I did send out a message today saying, um. That because of the information you sent last night from Baker Tilly, it certainly appears that that paving project at the airport needs to get done. Could be done under ARPA. And rather than trying to take it out of. You know, out of Brandy Day or someplace and get that moving forward. Um, I don't know whether there's interest in that or not, because every time we mention that, we know we've got to get the ma- commissioners on board for it. Um, and then I also asked about. The airport needs a genera- a backup generator. It's a hundred thousand dollars. So if we could find that in an old bond someplace. And. Or in ARPA, because that, you, you know, the airport has to have a backup generator.
But is that in their budget right now?
No, I mean, I, but if we're talking about what can we add into ARPA or into bond, I wanted to throw that in there, just wanna make sure.
I was just wondering where that came from. Okay.
Yeah, both of those are not current.
And those vehicles, uh, Ms. Purdy did say that she was gonna cover it, find a place in the bond.
In one of the old bonds, yeah.
And, and we did get the community corrections approval from the state, so we can move forward with that. So even if you take the expenses that we were going to put in there and move it over into ARPA, that frees up. That four hundred twenty five thousand that we can put other jail expenses in.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Counselor Iverson?
Uh, is it okay if, uh, Bree gives a response?
Yes, of course, sir.
Yeah, um, Counselor Hock, yeah, I totally agree that airport paving would be eligible as well. I was simply looking at actual budgeted items for twenty twenty four, but I. I definitely agree with you there. And I did fail to mention that the A E D. And I did fail to mention that the AEDs are also an appropriate ARPA expense, and I meant to mention that previously.
And I know those are also on the list for this year's.
Yeah.
Uh, on on the paving uh projects, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that you sent out this afternoon, which, thank you, that's very helpful. Uh, and obviously, the eleven sixty-nine local road and street, but two, by two minutes line, that that's, that's one of the paving projects. But you also included the um, the amount for paving in, out of our rainy day as well, and that's a, that's a million dollars.
Yes, I believe we can, um, I need to discuss that a little bit further with Lisa Ridge. However, I believe we will be able to correct that out, and we can, I think we have the documentation needed on hand.
That's very interesting.
If that's something you choose to.
Yeah, 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 conditional, of course, yeah.
Counselor Hawk? Sorry.
Oh, um, I, I think I also saw uh what when Bree sent that out was that uh documentation, we could use what we have paid out already out of Brandy Day for the highway and be able to pull it back into ARPA. Oh, hey, did you just now say that? I'm sorry, I was reading, okay, um. I'm just trying to figure out how much of this I'm supposed to have already read, I just.
You're all over the place.
Uh, I, I want to echo something that Counselor Hawk said, and I just want to iterate this for, uh, particularly for our commissioner uh folks. Um, whatever we have in bondage, as far as dollars that have been put aside for bond, let's let no bond go unturned. Uh, those are dollars that have been borrowed, looked at, et cetera, so if those create options for funding uh anything that they would fit, then I think that we should uh make use of that as well.
Completely agree. Um, any other comments or questions on that? Okay. Um, any other updates or um, information before we get started?
No, not at this time.
Great, thank you. And then our first item of business is um the county fair budget.
All right, appreciation to our county fair folks who've been waiting with the patience of Job. Council, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand zero eight zero six, General County Fair, with category requests of in services, one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars, and a total of the same.
Second.
Welcome. Could we get a third chair pulled up, please? Thank you. Thanks for your patience, since we uh have a long preamble before getting into the heart of things. All right, so we have the budget um up on the screen, and we have a couple of papers that you shared with us. Would you like to give us the highlights?
I'm just, hi, I'm Dana Stevens, um, just to give you what we do with the funding that you give us, um, which we're very appreciative of. Um, I think we, our fair this year was fantastic, um, and a lot of people use the fairgrounds. I feel like that we have a lot more usage out of the place, um, we're seeing more people come out there, more interest in it, and it takes a lot to keep it going. Um, this is my second year on the fair board, and I had no idea. So, um, it's been a big, a big undertaking, but I enjoy every minute of it, so.
Can, can you please pull the microphone closer to you, and, yeah, thank you.
Sorry. Um, so we're actually not done with our twenty twenty-three expenses, so it was kind, we're not even done with our fair board, our numbers yet. So we're still having invoices coming in, um, bills coming in and everything, so we really didn't have um our expenses. They are a lot. Um, pricing, as you know, everything goes up. So we um just gave you what we left our budget at. We know we won't go lower than that on our budget for twenty twenty-four. Um, so we did a four percent increase, but we're grateful for anything we get.
Okay. Did you do a four percent increase across all lines?
Just did a four percent of the total.
Ah, I see, so effectively.
Yeah, of the total budget.
Okay. Um, are there questions from council? Counselor McKim?
So I'm, I'm looking at your twenty twenty-four uh Northern County Fair Association budget here, and I don't see that particular number. Is that so? The, the money from the county is not paying for particular line items, it's just one revenue source in addition to like gate fees.
Yes, those, they, correct, yes, it goes into a pot of money, we spend all of it out of there.
Okay, what, what are your other revenue sources besides the, the county subsidy ads?
Um, we do rentals of the buildings throughout the year, then, of course, our gate fees for general admission, our grandstand events. Um, the carnival brings in a large portion of the revenue, and um that's pretty much what we, where we get our revenue from is renting the buildings is the big priority of it.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Deckard?
Your auditorium is extraordinary, and I think it's a real gem on the side, that side of the county, and I, I unfortunately, I think people don't always know about it. Are you, are you seeing rental, rental, I, I can't talk to that. Are you seeing rent go up on that or usage go up on that in any way year over year?
I would say in the next, last couple of years, everything's, our buildings in general have went up, but our auditoriums went up. We've, we've hired new caretakers, so, and they're really pushing our rentals. Um, they're going through a few online, there's a couple websites online that like a reference when somebody says they're having a wedding, it gives them ideas of in rural county, what they can rent, and we've kind of pushed that more, awesome.
Other questions? Oh, hi, sorry, Counselor Munson, go right ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to uh thank uh Fair Board President Jay Conard, a longtime um supporter and advocate, Les Carmichael, and Treasurer uh Dana Stevens for uh presenting us information tonight. And uh while there's only a four percent increase in um what the county subsidy for uh county fair property and buildings uh would be in, in twenty twenty-four, uh their expenses are likely to be mu- much higher than an increase of four percent for twenty twenty-four. Counselor McKim was right sa- by uh pointing out that the money all goes into a big pot. Uh, but that big pot is, has a finite number. And so I know how hard the fair board members work to bring revenue into uh into the system and to keep the fair going. And thanks to uh, thanks to Counselor Deckard for pointing out the auditorium. It's a, it's a great facility and one that is available to rent by various organizations. Uh, the same is true for the community building and for other buildings at uh, at the fairgrounds. So, community support uh can grow to help, to help this uh operation. And I urge council members to support the four percent increase in the subsidy that the county provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council? I think four percent, um. Oh, go right ahead.
Yes, I have a comment. As the auditor and the person who cuts the check uh to the fair board and has for many, many years, as both count, as both the auditor and the treasurer, it's been many, many years now. Um, I take issue with, with what was written, and this is respectfully take issue, with what was written in the fair book, and it says, for many years, there was a tax levy that helped pay for the improvements to the grounds. Today, these improvements are made through donations, advertising rentals of buildings, and the public attendance at the events on the grounds. Nothing is mentioned about the mo- the money that comes out of our levy that still supports the fair. And the reason it upsets me is when we switch from giving you guys a tax levy to giving money this way, we increased your money substantially, and I fought for that for you. As a tenured four-H member and a person who has grand championships there in open class, I really support the fair very, very much. And um I would just like the county uh citizens who pay their taxes, and that tax money equates to this hundred and thirteen thousand dollars plus, to have credit for that and not to be represented in the fair book in a fair and equitable manner at, in, in the um, in the proportion that advertising and donation and rentals of buildings and public attendance uh receives. Because this hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars is a substantial amount of money, and it's much greater than the old twenty-five thousand dollars we used to give you guys that I fought to increase. So I want to say that publicly, I've said it several times, but no one has called me back or responded to any of that. And I think that is very important, because every single penny of that hundred and thirteen thousand dollars comes out of the pockets of one of these citizens through their property taxes that, that we have to collect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments then? Okay, um, that said, I think that, you know, four percent is the growth quotient, and so a four percent increase seems on par, and um, so I'll, I'll, I'll support this budget. Um, if there aren't any more comments, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote on moving forward with the county fair uh budget request.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilks?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, now we're at item six, Health Department.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review fund one, one, six, one, local public health services.
Second.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome, Dr. Pickard, Ms. Kelly. So we've seen you already, and we've gone over lots of budgets. Um, but we have two on our agenda this evening.
Yes.
And we had some uh adjustments to talk about.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so well, I will start off by saying that um back in August, I had submitted three council agenda request forms. Um, and uh it was recommended to me to bring these up during the budget session, because it would be impacting the budget. Um, so the budget that I have prepared this evening does reflect those changes, um, and so that's why I have the material that I do. Um, so one of those does, one of the agenda request items was we recently passed a part-time salary grid rate for all of our, our part-time employees. Um, so there will be some adjustments needed for the part-time hourly rates, so that is one item. Um, an additional item was a fourth, well, a third assistant registrar position. So that has been reflected in the budget that you are seeing this evening. And lastly, um, we requested an agenda request form to discuss salary grid adjustments for all health department employees. And the adjustments that are reflected in the financial statements that you have include a ten percent increase.
Counsel?
Yes.
Do you want me to continue to display what was originally submitted, or would you like for me to display what she uh submitted today that has the um ten percent that she's talking about?
Yes.
For the first two items that she mentioned, I think it's helpful to have what was there, because it addresses those line items. But for the ten percent, it might be helpful to have the other document, since that's more global. That's just my opinion then.
Okay.
That's fine. Counselor McKim?
I mean, I don't have any problem with the first two uh items, but I don't see how the second, how the third item is even possible. This, this, it's, it, I mean, I, you know, we have no doubt that everybody in the health department is that valuable, but i- it essentially would be mean restructuring our entire salary system. Right now, we, you know, it has taken us twenty years, I think, to be on firm footing with a uh, with our grid-based uh compensation system in which a PAT-B in department, you know, in the health department is the same as a PAT-B in the recorder's office is the same as a PAT-B in the public defender's office. We cannot go back to a system in which we have a separate grid for each department. I mean, if, if we do this, this request, if we were to grant this request, then we, why don't we also have a uh, a, a separate assessors grid or a separate auditor's grid? We just, I just, I, it's not simply a matter of the cost of the ten percent uh raises. It is literally a complete deconstruction of our entire sap compensation system. And cannot do, at least I cannot support that on the fly like this.
Thank you, Counselor McKim. Any other council comments at this point? Okay, so uh it sounds like Michelle, you've got marching orders on what to display here, so we can take a greater look. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I just wanted to add that um this is your first year to do a budget, and so, and I appreciate the fact that you are representing your department, and uh by next year, you'll recognize if you want certain increases in salaries, you either have to change their classification, and that has to be approved through us, or everybody gets the same kind of a raise. We try to treat everyone the same. But I don't fault you for trying. This is your first rodeo here.
Absolutely, and with this Health First Indiana funding, um, that was really one of the um key points that the state uh was making with this additional funding to invest in our health um department workforce, so um, along with other health departments, of course, that was something that I was going to um prepare for. Yes, of course.
Uh, one, one comment I, I wanted to make is, I, I do want to mention, and, and you've watched all these budget here, I hope you haven't watched them all, but you've probably seen one or two.
On everyone.
I've seen everyone.
And this goes for every, really, anyone um that has watched this, of our folks in the county. Uh, if we had a theme here this time, the goal is to get more dollars for every county employee that, that, in a uniform way. If there was anything coming from this, and so uh, I don't know that this is it for what the, the counselors have said, but our goal is maybe even tonight, yeah, I, I don't want to predict anything. But to have that kind of an answer for county employees who I know this is an exceedingly valuable topic for them, as we've heard time and time again.
Counselor McKim?
And I think that's a, that's a very good point. I mean, I, I don't know how others feel, but I am hoping that we will be able to do eight point five percent, which is close to ten percent. Yeah, I, I hope we can come to that kind of agreement tonight, but.
Other comments or questions? That's so.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Of course.
I did, I didn't want it to rub, uh, but.
I didn't want it to rub, uh, but. Councilman Deckard, I I also share your inability. It it's really acoustics in here are really strange.
Yeah.
Uh, nevertheless, um. Uh, this is just my two cents worth having been on the board for decades now, uh two decades. Is that public health funding in our state. Is abysmal, has been abysmal. We ranked in the forty-fifth, forty-fifth, forty-seventh position nationwide. Finally, state government recognized this, and as their budget allowed. Um, they decided that this was a priority, and and I am, I mean, I'm all in. I. I completely applaud this. I think it's something long overdue. Uh, in the book that came with this new law. Uh, there is a, there's a workbook, and it's called Workforce Assessment. And much of that assessment is dedicated to the chronically underpaid staff. At county health departments. So, you know, that's the genesis of 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 this. It, I I completely appreciate your, your um. Uh, this is all new to me, the PAT, whatever, and all those things. Uh, that the board has not traditionally been involved in these kinds of discussions. We were more of a health policy board. But as it, it it appears that we are now going to be and have been in the last year, more involved in administration. Uh, hopefully as a, as an aide and not a. Not a a a detriment to to Lori's actions, but um. I would just like for you to consider the fact that the health department employees. We have employees leaving to go to other departments. Uh, so. And that just happened not all that long ago. And because of the, because of the pay, which I'm just addressing, you know, your concern, uh, counsel and uh McKim, um. So there are other departments making more money. It's my understanding the sheriff's department just got a big bump in salary, probably because they were, have been. Chronically underpaid uh for their, for their jobs, just a guess. So I I know that some of the salaries increases seem maybe out of line with what has traditionally been done, but. Um, we're. We've also been a long-suffering department with a, with a higher turnover rate uh than uh. Probably other departments because of this. And uh. Lori has the ship going in the right direction, and we have great employees now, really efficient employees. Our statistics will show that in the last year, we are now doing more procedures. By like a triple, threefold. Uh, and we don't want to lose these people. And and, you know, I guess that's will be my final word is that, you know. Uh, we appreciate our employees, we appreciate the position that you're in. I mean, I'm not. I certainly, whatever you decide here tonight, I certainly don't, I I I understand what you have to do. You have to be responsible. Uh, so um. Anyway, thank you for listening and appreciate anything you can do for us.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, I, you know, uh, from a PAC perspective or the the personal administration uh committee. It it's not the, that we don't want to support the employees of the c- community. It it is, and I think I agree with what Mr. McKim said. It's, it's just, it's the method. Uh, and so I I would encourage you to reach out to the PAC administrator, which in this case is is Michelle. And continue this conversation about how we can more equitably, uh, you know, make sure that. Uh, we are attracting and retaining quality health staff. I I don't think this is, this is necessarily the end of the conversation, I.
Agreed, okay. Um, Council McKim.
I guess I I was, I'm I'm looking at the old. Budget request versus the new, and I just want to make sure I understand. There's one line that's labeled removed. That had something in the twenty.
Oh, um, is it personnel? I believe it is. Okay. Um, so our DIS program coordinator was originally in um that spot. And um with this Health First funding, this funding is intended to be used within Monroe County. Currently, our DIS employees um serve twelve counties, so they cover an entire district. This, um, the coordinator wanted to ensure that she could still provide services in all twelve counties. Um, so essentially, I've kind of flip-flopped the positions. Um, so we do still have a a disease intervention specialist. Um, in this Health First funding, um, who's going to be providing services strictly within Monroe County as well as a part-time assistant. And we are going to, uh, the goal is to keep the DIS coordinator grant funded. Um, and hopefully be able to obtain enough grant funding to also add a position to serve all twelve counties.
Got it, thanks. And then, so now, uh, on the vital statistics registrar. You have three total, right?
Correct.
Or you're requesting three total. Thank you. We're gonna have to figure out what motion to make.
Uh, yeah.
To to approve this because.
Yeah. The.
Uh, I think one other change, um, the two new positions that are proposed and going through the PAC process. Um, those have now been included. Is that correct, Michelle?
We, um, we just got back the Behavioral Health and Wellness Coordinator.
Okay.
Um, information. Uh, the Public Health Liaison uh has yet to go to PAC, so that's scheduled for October. So that app hasn't even been uh reviewed yet.
Okay, so.
Is the behavioral health and wellness correct according to the.
Um.
The way it came back?
Oh, so, sorry, that that would need to increase. I uh guesstimated at a PAT A.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that amount's not correct.
So currently, well, as of earlier today, I still had thirty-nine thousand dollars um within eleven sixty-one to. Um, try to quickly um strategize where to place that. I now will have um. Additional funds, um, once we reduce these salary rates back down. So this will be changing again, and then the budget will be re-submitted to the state September twenty-fifth. So I imagine, um, maybe we'll be increasing our contracts through partnership agreements. Um, supplies and services, um, so those figures will likely go up in the supply and service categories.
I have a question. Is um, I'm assuming that position is thirty-five hours?
Correct.
Okay, um, and then you would be uh putting it in at the um minimum?
Correct.
Okay, so that amount is forty-three thousand six oh eight. That's what uh we're currently at. So that would be the flat amount for twenty twenty-four.
Um, additionally, in eleven fifty-nine, once we make those changes back with the salaries. Um, I will be moving some of that money around, um, as the total amount that. We had come up with was nine hundred and eighty-four thousand and six hundred and twenty dollars. So still pretty close to the minimum opt-in of nine eighty-four, five ninety-five, which is required. For the county.
So, so I guess procedurally, what is it we we need to do with eleven sixty-one, since it sounds like. We still need to make some more changes, or you need to make some more changes before we. Uh, before we vote on it.
I I I want to suggest that you do it per category. So, uh, because it looks like if you go through, she's made changes all the way for each category. So if you want to. Um, just say that you want to stick with the twenty twenty-four requested. Rather than the new amended, you know, that kind of thing, or. But do it per category, and then I know which, which where we're at.
So you, so you actually think we're gonna vote on this today?
Right, that's what I'm saying. Do you, do you want to approve?
I tell you what, let me, let's try this a different way.
Okay.
Yeah. Counsel, I move that we approve the twenty twenty-four. The new twenty twenty-four requested budget with the exception of the ten percent addition to salaries.
One second.
Counselor Iverson.
Uh, under the uh motion just made for the Behavioral Health and Wellness Coordinator, that would still be the higher amount. That we'd be adopting, is that correct?
Hmm, yes.
I mean, we'll have to fix, you know, we may have to tweak it.
Come back and up, break it down.
Yeah, depending on how it comes out.
I think.
It allows them to move forward.
I was just about to say, I think Counselor McKim's motion makes a lot of sense for the sake of. Moving forward this evening.
Yeah, because we tabled it indefinitely the last time this came before us, and it'd be nice to move. Yeah.
They can come back with tweaks if they need to.
Okay, um, further comment or discussion?
Hi, I'm sorry, who's second in the amendment?
Counselor Hawk.
Thank you.
Okay. In that case, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote on the motion as um. Stated by Counselor McKim to move forward with the. We're voting on both, the both health funds, budgets.
No, we haven't done eleven fifty-nine.
Sorry, eleven sixty-one budget.
Yes, this is for eleven sixty-one. It's to approve the new amounts minus the ten percent of the salaries.
Yep.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous on the amendment.
Okay, so we're gonna consider eleven fifty-nine?
With my motion.
We need a motion if we're going to.
Oh, I had modified a motion. Hold on, just a procedural question just real quick.
Yes.
The the motion that we just voted on was to. Uh, was to pass eleven sixty-one or to pass an amendment to eleven sixty-one?
It was to pass eleven sixty-one, because he never read. The initial motion was just a a generic to.
Yeah.
Discussion.
So now a new modified motion could replace a generic.
If you'd like, or.
For eleven sixty-one? I I think the way we just did it is fine.
Yeah, I'm fine because there was no official motion other than we opened it.
So, counsel, I moved open for discussion and review health fund eleven fifty-nine zero 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 zero. Without the ten percent increase.
Second.
Okay.
So I know this leaves.
Go right ahead.
I know this leaves you with some, uh, uh, we we need to increase this budget then, since we've taken out the ten percent. We need to increase it to make, to make up for match, right?
Quite a bit, yes.
What what did you say, say that the the minimum was?
Uh, uh, nine, nine eighty-four, five ninety-five, and eleven fifty-nine. And eleven sixty-one as one million five hundred and seventy-seven and some odd dollars.
Trying to think if it would make sense.
I think it'll be close to a hundred thousand. Ish, with the thirty-nine thousand that was still unaccounted for earlier today.
So wait, where, where, when you say that thirty thousand not accounted for, the total in the paperwork we have here says nine eighty-four, six twenty.
Mm-hmm.
As the bottom line.
Uh, for eleven fifty-nine, that is correct. Uh, I'm still speaking of the eleven sixty-one.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
That's one million five hundred?
Seventy-seven, and I don't have the rest of the exact numbers.
Okay, so then. Yeah, with the ten percent is, that was just under what the, what you needed, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do, do you need to see eleven sixty-one again?
No, they're right in front of me, and I, I apologize because this. You know, I haven't had a chance to look this over as much as I'd like, so. Very inarticulate and not leading the meeting very well, because I'm trying to read too. Are there any other questions or comments?
I was just gonna suggest we stay on eleven fifty-nine since that's where we're at.
That's back to eleven sixty-one a little bit.
You were gonna suggest what?
Uh, stay, stay on eleven fifty-nine and tackle those issues.
Yeah.
Here, since uh Mr. Deckard read that that motion, we're into that motion.
Mm-hmm. It's.
And and so here we have those two positions that you had mentioned at the outset are in eleven fifty-nine, correct?
I believe it's double budgeted, but those are intended to be in eleven sixty-one.
Okay.
You, I mean, do you think you're going to use those, that ten percent? Uh, that's mo- that's moving back at, well, you know. We're chasing our tails.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
We might wind up adding a percentage or something.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, that's true. Can we? I mean, it is non-binding, and we know she's gonna make changes.
Right.
So we can say that we, we can vote on moving forward. Having her move forward, making the adjustment she's, she sees fit, although we should probably take another look. Um.
Yeah, so we just do it the same way we did the other one.
Yeah.
That they just pass it minus the ten percent and then understand she's gonna have to. Put something else in there to bring it back up to the minimum.
And that's exactly the motion that was read, so I think we're in good shape.
Well, he said open for discussion, I think, wasn't it?
But he did say the minus.
He did.
Percent.
Yeah, he did.
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that would give her fiddle room.
You have fiddle room.
Before we hit final adoption.
Fiddle room.
Quite a bit, yes.
This is not a binding.
Well, at all.
Trying to express.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, and this is challenging. I mean, I want to make strategic decisions. And again, which is why it was near the end of the day, and I'm like, I still have thirty-nine thousand dollars, but I just don't want to. Put it someplace.
Yeah.
I want to have a game plan. Um, so a lot of these are game plans. They're work in progress, just like all of the contracts, the agreements. The MOUs, I have money filled into those areas to address these core services, but I don't yet have the contracts. We don't have the official agreements. It's all a work in progress, and um twenty twenty-four is gonna be a really big building year. Hopefully, twenty twenty-five, we'll be able to focus stronger on those partnerships and collaboration. Um, but this has been a lo- learning process, but it's also been very exciting. Um, but I want to make sure that we're using this money with good intentions.
Yeah, all I I would just kind of echo that, all of this on, but every imaginable is trying to figure it out best we can. Even when we adopt the budget, we start thinking about the next one.
Mm-hmm.
And here it goes, quit it.
Yep.
We'll be back here in like twelve seconds.
Press this salary ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I I. I think we should just vote on, on the motion that was, was just made. You know, we'll hopefully know by the end and to today, maybe what kind of cost of living increase, and then, then you'll have.
Then you'll be able to do it back into.
Yeah. So, other questions or comments before we? Take a vote. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote then on moving forward with health fund eleven fifty-nine. As stated by Counselor Deckard.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
It's just. So.
And Lori, I will work with you and Eric to get the correct numbers and get those back out to the council.
Thank you. And and Ms. Shell has been so helpful through this process, so I really appreciate being able to lean on her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for navigating this new.
That's a lot.
Yes, so hopefully we'll be in a much better place next year. I definitely think so.
This whole process with the new money is just clear as mine.
Yeah.
We're used to that. That's, that's what we do.
Thank you.
It is a good problem.
Definitely could be the opposite, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to move to uh, item seven, proposed changes to prior budgets and we'll start with the recorder's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion, fund one thousand, zero 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 four, general fund recorder and to set line one zero one four nine, recorder deputy to twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Second.
So this reflects moving one deputy position or one half of the salary of a deputy in, into the recorder's perpetuation fund, um.
Technically, we don't have to make the decision about the recorder's perpetuation funds, the recorder can do that without appropriation, right?
Right.
I couldn't remember if you did or not, so I included it just in case.
We'll need to do it in salary.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any questions? We had discussed this and I believe um, Auditor Smith said that she had had a conversation with the recorder saying that this was something that was at least okay with.
She, the recorder sent an email today.
Right.
Basically saying.
Okay.
Yes, and that's what I was just gonna say, she did send an email saying she is willing to move the highest paid um, deputy and do a, a.
Got it. Perfect, thank you, other questions?
Just that we thank the recorder for.
Yeah.
Working with us.
Yeah, that's really nice, we appreciate it. Um, could we go ahead and then have a roll call vote on moving forward with the update to the recorder's general fund?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion, fund one one eight nine zero zero zero.
We don't need it.
We don't.
Oh, we don't?
No.
I'm sorry.
We're on item B now.
Counsel, I moved open for general discussion, fund one thousand zero zero one, general fund clerk on the overtime line, one seven one zero one.
Thank you.
Second.
And um, this is regarding um, the possibility of reducing the overtime line um, further. Given that we are hopeful, and by we, I think it's I don't wanna speak for other folks, but there are a few of us who um, feel that the current limitation on comp time should be increased and council doesn't do that. So, you know, that's not our purview, however, um it was at the point of discussion when we did talk with the clerk and um, it does seem that being able to use and, and be more flexible with comp time um, can be a more economical way to allow them the flexibility that they need. Um, so with that suggestion being put forward to the personnel policy committee, I believe, is what it's called. Um, we were thinking, I was thinking that we could go ahead and reduce the overtime line um, to fifteen thousand for this fund, and just as a reminder, this is the fund um, for the clerks' positions that are not running the election, where you might think, oh my gosh, they, they need that deep overtime to, to manage November and May. Um, are there questions? And then the, yeah.
Right, at uh, one time, couple of years ago, I think we were still receiving a list from the payroll department showing us um the department that had more than a certain amount of hours in comp time. And I think that's essential, that we get that going again, because we know that that comp time buildup is actually uh, an obligation, a financial obligation of the county because of that if that, and I'm not speaking of just this department, I'm just saying in general. Because if that employee leaves and that, then that comp time has to be paid out in cash. And that was some of the reason why some of these rules were changed around, trying to reduce the amount of comp time buildup. And we've seen, uh, just recently, the city had some real challenges with that as well, so um, it's just something that we, we should keep an eye on. I don't know why it changed that we quit getting that, but we need to get it.
That was very helpful, you're right, that was a nice report.
Yes.
Um, we will still be uh, providing those reports, however, ha- comp hasn't been as much of its issue as it has in the past. So those thresholds do help quite a bit, however, I actually just followed up with the internal auditor recently and she's been consumed with other audits and projects, however, that is um, coming your way very shortly.
Okay.
And, and I wanted to add to that, when we talk about equivalency of comp time versus the expense of overtime, it is a one and a half, it is, it's, it's straight time to forty, then one and a half times, then double time over sixty. The, the important point is, when jobs go unfilled and somebody covers for those positions, that money sitting out there available to be moved down into the overtime line to cover that person working overtime so that they don't build up a giant amount of comp time that we have a, a, a fiscal liability for. And that, and you don't expect someone to not do their own job because they're busy doing somebody else's job. If they're doing a, their job, then they add five hours to somebody else's job. We, we want to compensate them, we don't want to be, we, we, we just want to use the money from those lines where it was actually already appropriated to, down to where it got expended from.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you, that's um, more articulate than I was, and I appreciate that, because it's not that you don't want to ever have overtime, that's certainly one way to um, address the need for getting work done, and especially in that scenario. Um, but at the same time, comp time is currently limited to forty in hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um, I think if, if we could increase that a little bit, that might enable some more flexibility.
Yeah, and I just, I appreciate you mentioning that because I think that's exactly right, I've done some research and forty hours i- uh, as a limit to comp time is very low by uh, public sector agency standards, that's um there's sixty, sixty to eighty is much more typical, and I know highway is uh, can accrue sixty. Uh, I think sixty is a reasonable standard uh, across the board for that, and so I made that recommendation to the commissioner's office, but as President Wiltz said, it's, it's not up to us, it's up to the personnel policy handbook.
And what commissioner's office was considering is moving it to sixty hours and then that's gonna be proposed to the other two entities that make up the personnel on board.
That's great.
Awesome, thank you. Other questions or comments?
I- in light of that, I, I appreciate what uh, Counselor Wiltz has kinda explained here. There's some of that I was not aware of uh, on this, and I think that's very helpful. My end goal, having observed this process a little bit, a few different ways over the years, is to make sure that A uh, folks get paid what they're doing, uh, department heads and elected officials who run those departments uh, are able to assign people to get things done, cuz gosh knows the public, when you, would come with an issue that you need addressed, they don't wanna hear about hours or time, they just wanted to address. Um, but then also that our policy would realistically not punish people. Uh, and would speak to what we need to do, and it sounds like we're heading that direction. So in light of that, I would amend my prior motion to uh, set line one seven one zero one in ju- in fund one thousand oh oh one, overtime to fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
And if that is not working, um, we'll have to revisit it, but I'm optimistic, given the budget numbers we have for this year, plus light of this new information that we can get there while we're trying to reach this cola for all of our folks.
Mm-hmm. Any others, yes, go right ahead.
Even if you only put one dollar in there, we all know that, that the department head can move within that category dollars down into that, so when you have an empty slot that sits there for two, three weeks, empty, they can take that salary line, move it down to the overtime line. That, and so at one time, we made sure there was no overtime line to be able to move it to because, uh, well, we were real short of money and because it was being abused at the time. But if we're going to allow overtime for any department, they may move away and be fair, just add it to every department, then they can all do that. I mean, why just some departments?
I think if it was set low enough, that, that would make sense. Um, but we will, we can save that till after. We tackle this one. Um, other questions or comments on making this change?
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, then could we have a roll call vote on setting the overtime line in the clerk's general fund to fifteen thousand?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion, fund one thousand zero three six one, general fund extension and to set line three five zero five zero, radio and CD sirens to zero dollars.
Uh, second, but it's really emergency management.
Yeah, extensions, they're buying some new emergency stuff.
The other E departments.
So the other E, I'm gonna amend that prior motion to be uh, general fund emergency management and the rest be the same.
Second.
Thank you, uh, okay, so this was um because I believe we were thinking of putting this into maybe cable franchise?
Um, yes, um, and or a bond. And I um, I spoke with um, Angie Purdy in the commissioner's office and she said that they have a line, um, uh, in an old bond with regards to sirens and radios and that they could move that amount into the, an old bond.
In an old bond.
But, but isn't this more like a maintenance contract? I don't, I don't know that this is bondable.
I know.
That, that, this is services, I, I.
I thought it was replacement, okay.
Well, yeah, contract increase in repairs.
Yeah, okay, sure. I see, yeah. Um, so cable franchise now. I know that we've got we've got room in, in there because we've got a balance in cable franchise.
Yeah, and Ms. Purdy has already, has also looked over and agrees, right?
Right.
Let's just go, let's go with it.
Well, one thing, and I'll just say this for the public record, if some friction hits and this is not able to be whatever I definitely, we've gotta revisit that because we don't want emergency management things dropping off just because of that, so. So I, I just wanna make that note publicly for us, uh, but if we can find alternatives, I'm well for it.
Okay, um. Sorry, I'm trying to open up the, the bond thing because the other thing that we had talked about moving into cable franchise is, uh Mm-hmm.
The cradle points and then
Yes.
It was um, software, maybe? That um, Ms. Purdy had in hers, that she reduced down and moved it into T S D.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the cradle points, um would, would they all, would, would cable franchise be able to accommodate both of those things? But the, I know I'm talking about something that we haven't opened yet, but to me, for putting things in the cable franchise, kind of thinking about can it sustain both?
Well, I mean, I, I'm looking at, at what was written out here, um, the paperwork, and I thought, let's see, we're gonna move considering the radio and sirens line, which we just did now, and then the next one is telephone and maintenance from tech services department in P S lit, right? Now, is that for the, the cradle points? That is.
I'll, I'll find it here in a second.
You're right, that can possibly also be paid, paid for out of, out of a little bond.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so what's on the screen right now is where um, in the public surface, uh, public safety lit, the commissioners reduced theirs to two hundred thousand and then you added fifty thousand for the su- radio software that she was requesting. So you increased the ninety thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. So it includes the cradle points as well as the radio solve.
Wait, I'm, can, can we see something that's current and, and is there a current? Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm getting confused, maybe I'm, maybe I'm the only one, but I'm a little bit confused.
I would try to pull up the lab.
Yeah, and I know it's difficult on that computer. So.
So what is the current? What is the current value of that, of that line, three zero zero seven two telephone maintenance?
These are.
What did we include?
Are you, I'm, I'm.
In T S D?
I'm just going. You, well, yeah, I isn't.
Are you looking at the T S D, is that?
Yes.
But cable franchise budget, or do you want um, public safety lit on the screen?
No, I think we're trying to figure out what to move out of.
Gotcha.
First, and we, I, I admittedly, what's on the floor right now is, is emergency management, but it sounds like uh, we need to also figure out what else we're gonna move in into cable franchise. So what we have here in the script is a motion to set the line telephone maintenance to zero. I don't wanna know how much, we're, what are we reducing to zero?
Okay.
How much was in there before?
Yeah.
Okay, so the um, telephone maintenance line, is that the line you're looking for?
I think that's ninety thousand.
Three zero zero seven two in tech services and P S lit.
Okay, it is set, you probably can't see it and I cannot make it any larger in loud, we set it for a hundred and forty thousand.
Oh.
Ah-ha, okay.
Right, right there, if you can.
Okay, so if we're gonna do that we don't wanna move both forty thousand of emergency management and a hundred and forty thousand of P S lit in, into cable franchise, that's too much.
Right.
It is, that's where, what he said, that's where I was headed, so how much is, is the balance in?
But those cradle points wh- what did you say that Angie said they could possibly also be paid out of?
Um, maybe ARPA? Right now, cable.
I hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Uh-uh.
Can you turn that mic up, please? Can you turn that mic up, please?
Can you, can you hear me now? Uh, right now, cable franchise fees have four hundred and almost six thousand dollars in it. Were you afraid it would, it would take it down too low?
Well, there's already an appropriation in there for the twenty twenty four budget, so I'm basically saying, yeah, I think that would be. And it sounds like Angie also thinks that, that that would be too, uh, too extreme.
She's, we talked yesterday and she says she's not anticipating is getting mu- as much revenue next year, so.
So why don't we just forget the emergency management change and just move the cradle points in there? And then if we find some other capital fund that can pay for them, then we can move them out of cable franchise. That.
Well, then what will we be doing? Are we just not gonna worry about the forty thousand dollars for s-? The radio, CD sirens?
That's what I'm suggesting, suggesting just withdraw that motion and move on to the next.
Like, just leave it. Counsel, for purposes of us not knowing yet what we're gonna do there, I withdraw my motion.
Alrighty then. And now we can move to the T S D one.
Okay, counsel, I move to open for discussion fund one one. Seven zero, uh, uh, zero one zero six, public safety lit T S D. And to set line three hundred seventy two telephone maintenance to zero dollars. Second.
Other questions?
I think we've covered it.
Alright, then could I have a roll call vote on the. Um, public safety lit T S D fund?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
L N D E, counsel, I move to open for discussion fund two five zero two zero 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 cable franchise. And to set line three hundred seventy two telephone maintenance to one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Second.
Other questions? If we have a roll call vote on the move of one hundred and forty thousand dollars into the cable franchise fee fund?
Counselor Mc- McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion fund one one zero seven zero 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 aviation. Second.
So this, um, this fund, we had talked about a few different things, um, including. The generator and the paving project, um, which are no longer, are they no longer in?
The paving project is, is still in there. Can, can we see the aviation budget, well, please?
That we took the paving out when we.
No, we took the skid steer and the, the vehicles out, but I don't think we took.
We took, we took out seventy thousand dollars for repaving the parking.
Did we take that out?
Mm-hmm.
We moved vehicle purchase out, and then we just did three other capital lines.
I thought, I thought we talked about.
I think, I think he took it out and, and even though he said he, he's been waiting up the whole time, he's been there to try to get it done. So why can't we just get it done with the ARPA money and? But I don't think it's gonna help your budget anymore, cause it's already out.
I thought it.
On the screen is.
Right.
What you changed things to, so.
I, I recall that it came out with the hope that it would go down.
Okay, can you scroll up, please? Where, where was paving then? Yeah, there it is, so we did not.
Nope.
Really?
No, we did not, we, we talked about it, and in fact, I even said I thought about making a motion, but I didn't.
Right, there was no change to that one.
So it's still in there?
It's still in there, so let's take it out and we'll figure out, alright, counsel, I move, we set line three zero one three zero, uh, parking lot, rapid main to zero.
Second.
Any questions? Alright, uh, roll call vote on that adjustment.
Just that we are planning on getting it out of ARPA, right?
Well, we have to get the Commissioners.
Oh, wow, right.
Yeah, I mean, there are a couple of options, it could be ARPA, it could be, I would love to find an old bond. Um, because we know that those funds are.
I don't think, I don't think you could pave out of a bond, can, yeah, no.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to ask the people who know.
Okay, are we ready? Okay. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion fund one one seven six zero 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 motor vehicle highway in the set line. Two three four zero zero by two minutes to one million dollars. Second.
Okay, so with this one. Does anyone remember? What we were doing?
Well, so my understanding is that. The community crossings, I mean, what, we, we wanna make sure that we have a hundred percent match for, at least. I think the purpose of this request is to make sure that we have a hundred percent match for community crossings. Uh, but that's not gonna come, I believe, until April. Is that right? So I guess, I don't, I. I know Counselor Hawke may have some thoughts about this, but I, I don't see why we have to decide this now. I, I don't.
I think, yeah, wait until we find out if we get the grant.
Why we have to take it out now is because they're going to be over budgeted.
Right, right, well, we don't have to find another place for it right now.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, does she have to prove that she has it to apply for the, or we could just leave the million that's in there. Uh, that we, we are approving, and she could use that for community crossing, and then we'd have no money for paving, and she could come and we could then. Get a, whatever.
True.
Mm-hmm.
And, and one thing I would add to that is, if we have, i- i- if we come back to it for a, a later fix. To address the community co- crossing grant, I could almost channel Ms. Ridge in saying that we'd have to be ready to move pretty quick. On that option, and I think as long as counsel understands that, is ready to move, that'll take stress off her life and her folks.
And when she's ready to go, if there's already, uh. Uh, if we already have it covered, uh, you know, mine item with an appropriation in there, she can move forward. Remember how she got delayed recently because we weren't moving forward quick enough, and she had to do it, so you can't do that. I, you know, fault me for this, I told her to double budget in there and cover paving as well as. Uh, for community crossing because I didn't want that to escape our notice.
All right, I, I.
Mission accomplished.
Yeah, we noticed. No, I think that's, uh, it's, it's a good discussion to have and to think about, and is this the? If we were to use the, the other budget for paving to match the grant, we could pave with ARPA funds, is what you're, you've said. Is that correct?
We can pave with.
Yes, we.
She said, yes.
Got it, alright.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm certainly not gonna support, uh, you know, I, I, I would certainly not support leaving money on tape.
Oh.
We, we, you know, we've had such great.
Yes.
Results from community crossings.
This is.
The residents, uh, really appreciate it, so all the great job that Highway has done on pavement.
Yeah, okay, other questions or comments? We just opened for discussion, oh, yep, and setting the line to.
One million.
One million, so we don't wanna do that?
Yeah, we do, cause otherwise, we can't pass the budget the way it is now, we have to reduce it to.
Okay. Could you please do a roll call vote on making this adjustment in the motor vehicle highway fund?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed you.
I don't know if we need this, do we need this next one? We don't need this.
Nope.
Uh, yes. Are, are we gonna, we have to hold off on that anyway, yeah, so we're on to number eight. Don't mind us. That's me, I've gotta talk now. Yeah, so, uh, some more discussion items, um. The first one to get the discussion rolling is. I'd like to open the discussion, uh, regarding the fiscal impact of the frozen levy and kind of see where we are. And what else is, um, needed. Feel like this, I'm like, I'm peeking between my fingers.
Well, you know, I started out tonight talking about how wonderful it was, and Jeff was, Mr., uh, Councilmember McKim was absolutely right. The, uh, the number did jump, so, uh, that, that's what I get for speaking too soon.
Although it jumped way back down when we, uh, fixed the health.
That's right, that's what that is. Which, which just makes this process so confusing for those watching, but. We will.
Yes.
I'm just, you know, just to, for the sake of moving the discussion forward, I'm gonna throw out a vote here, and I'm not interested in, in. Uh, what everybody else is, is interested in, but I, I support the request for full time. For, I'm sorry, forty hours for the, uh, prosecutor's office and the, uh, public defender. And I support an eight point five percent, uh, cost of living adjustment across the board.
And you have a dollar.
It's a bogey.
It's a bogey.
It's not a motion, it's a bogey.
Just wanted to stake out a position here.
That's, well, you know, um. I am. Inclined to favor both of those things, eight and a half percent COLA. As well as, um, the change from thirty five to forty for our attorney positions. In theory. Uh, what I'd like to do is. Adjust. What I'd like to do is, so the thirty five to forty is about is twelve percent, twelve and a half percent, right? So if we give those folks a twelve and a half percent increase. Less than eight and a half percent increase. Then I would like it, whatever else we do with our other attorneys, to make it so that everybody's all cool. You know what I mean? Cause our other attorneys are already at forty.
Right, so they're already benefiting from that, that increase, and they've already been benefiting for years, they don't need it again.
Right, why, why do you think they want, the other attorneys want forty hours? That's because. The county attorneys that work for the Commissioners Council. Have been on forty hours now for several years, that's, why do you think they're coming forward, the others and saying, huh, we want it too?
Well, I do think they're coming forward because they want money, I mean, they're underpaid.
Well, right, I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
This is sort of a philosophical position, but I, sorry, but I think when, when we're, when we're talking about a compensation system. We want the end result to be fair.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that the change to get there will also be perceived as fair. You know, i- it's, we want the end result to be fair, so I think, thinking of it as a twelve percent raise plus an eight percent raises. Is not really the right way to look, it's like when we, when we did the, the Commissioners increase. There were legitimate reasons to argue against the Commissioners increase, don't get me wrong, I think that was a hard decision. But the percentage increase was not the, not a good argument against it, it was not the right way to look at it. We were, we were fixing what we thought was a problem with positions that we thought would, are really full time, would be paid as part time. And so we fixed it, the fact that it was X percent increase is absolutely relevant.
Right, right, and I know, yeah.
So I think we need to look at the end result, not at what percentage increase it takes to get there. And how that compares against other people's percentage increase.
Okay.
And then Councilman Munson, yes.
Counselor Munson. Thank you, I had, uh, I had some thoughts on this, and I think it, they might be helpful. In looking, uh, more toward our bottom line, I would like us to be, uh, looking at the. The four B and, um, the key cells there. Um, and then seeing what changes we would make. How it would affect those key cells, so it'd be good to have. The current status and then, uh, the new proposed status that we could look at both, both, uh, both spreadsheets. You see what I mean? Like, okay, so we want to consider Counselor McKim's proposal of an eight point five percent COLA. And forty hours for, um, the prosecutor and public defender attorneys. Um. And so that those, um, that proposal could be calculated and then compared with, uh, the current. Um, four B, as it was briefly shown not too long ago.
Well, we do have, I mean, Michelle has put together some data on the impacts of both of these potential changes by themselves. Not, not, not combined, right, but.
Okay.
I mean, do you, do you wanna talk over the, you sent us out a spreadsheet with the eight point five percent?
And does Counselor Munson have everything that we have?
I, yes.
Not in front of me.
I, I was gonna say, I emailed everything out and I also printed it because I knew everyone wouldn't have time to look at it and that kind of thing. So, um, do you want to look at the comparisons, um, of the thirty five to start?
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Yes, I would like to make sure we're looking at the eight and a half first, see where we are there. And then we, you know, I mean, I, I accept the fact that you're thinking thirty five to forty, I'm not saying I object to that. But I think our first goal was to get everybody to the eight and a half.
Fair enough.
That's true, but if we then go back and do the forty, we're have to change what we, the, that changes the impact that we have quite a bit.
Sure.
Above, beyond just that initial.
What you do is you see, okay, this is, this is where we're headed.
Thank you.
And this, the thirty five to forty is something we'd like to do on top of that, let's figure out what, if we can do the eight and a half. We can, then we see.
No, I see, yeah, in terms of priorities, I agree with you. Yeah, um, so, what's about that?
On the screen, cause I, I went through several scenarios, so this is the thirty five hour attorneys. Um, at the eight and a half, and I also went through, counted all the attorneys, I put them on the scale. Where, where they would be with the step increases, uh, for twenty twenty four. So a fiscal impact, moving thirty five hour attorneys to eight point five. Is going to cost twenty eight thousand four forty six at the one year level. So I do not have a grand total on this all the way across, I can do that. So I do not have a grand total on this all the way across. I can do that shortly, but.
Could you repeat that number? Could you repeat that number because it's throwing a bunch of zeros?
Well, let me see if I can. Can you see it now? It's right up here. Twenty-eight, and that's for, um, that's a one year. So if you look at this grid, it's one. Or a minimum, one, three, eight, fourteen, twenty. And then the last one here is twenty-five.
This is calculated using the current number of positions that we have at those levels.
Correct.
So what we would wanna do to find out the total impact.
Right, and.
Is add those together.
Right, across.
And then below that you have the seventeen percent, tell me.
Well, I, I did the flat rate as well, so that.
Yeah.
There's the eight and a half percent and then there's the flat rate. And then. There was a conversation with regards to the public defender, um, as well as the prosecutor with regards to trying to get. People, um, new hires in, um, at either seventy to eighty thousand. Um.
Oh.
And that, the only way that I could reach that goal at a minimum was to go to seventeen.
Right.
So, um, if you go seventeen percent. Um, that would, we have three levels of SO attorneys. And an SO attorney A going at seventeen percent would get you approximately. Whoops, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. An SO attorney A at seventeen would get you almost seventy thousand. And, but we don't have anybody currently at that, but we do have some people at the one-year level. Um, hiring then at a seventeen percent at an SO attorney B. Would then be, oh, a little over eighty thousand. Which was the target areas that both of the departments were talking about. So that's why I, I chose that seventeen percent. To kind of give you an idea of how much it would take to get that. Target area for thirty-five hours.
At still at thirty-five hours.
That's still at thirty-five hours.
So the, this. So this does not address moving from thirty-five to forty and then doing an eight and a half percent.
No, this is just strictly everyone that, um, that we employ at thirty-five.
And then you're gonna do an eight and a half on top of that. Yes, go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Counselor Hawk's approach. That first we kind of come to a consensus on the overall, uh, percentage increase and then. We look at, uh, the attorneys separately, cause that kind of goes on top and that we ought to consider all the county employees first. And, you know, maybe, maybe it'll take some time, you know, maybe we won't be able to come to the attorney decision today because maybe. The, we'll, it'll take some time to get all the data put together. So that we have, you know, once we, once we digest the eight point five percent, add it to the four B, get everything corrected. Then we'll have the information to Counselor Munson. So that's, I think we ought to first come to a consensus on the, on the raise for everybody.
Counselor Deckard?
Thank you very much, and I, I appreciate the comments and I, I again wanna stress, I appreciate. The elected officials and department head who've come forward with the, the numbers to make this happen, um. One of the things I'll say is, uh, while we do as a county council. We have a, a, a duty to the folks that, that work here, we have a duty to the taxpayers to make sure we do it right. They sent us here to figure this out. And so with that in mind, what I wanted to say is, um, I agree wholeheartedly that the priority goal. Is the eight and a half percent COLA, uh, that is number one. Uh, that doesn't mean the thirty-five to forty-four. Attorneys takes a backseat to that, it just means that we've identified that as a cross-the-board goal. And we've discussed that, we've been moving towards that, we've had a goal towards that, and that's important. In fact, I had a discussion with our prosecutor. Early in this process and she, she could verify this. I said that, that is a goal, that's where we're trying to get. Now that said, um, I think if these numbers would bear out. And the numbers would demonstrate that the thirty-five to forty change in some form, if not that form itself. Could be done, I think we need to do it. And I think we need to do it wholeheartedly if the numbers bear out. And that's, again, me speaking to my duty to the taxpayers. Cause they hired me to come here and figure this out and to, and to puzzle over this, and that's the money management we've done. Uh, the reason I think we should look hard at that beyond the eight and a half percent, uh, in, in some form, if not that form. Is simply because, uh, we sat here in the last meeting and we listened to what appears to be an overwhelmingly difficult. Re- uh, recruitment of attorney problem that we have. And a staggering amount of activity that's happening on both the defense council, which is a priority and value of this community, as well as. The prosecution council, which is also a priority and value of this community. Our folks like it both ways and they want it done well. And as I was sitting here last week, I'm, you know, I'm trying to do what people that are in public office often do. And don't just get to the, the, the problem. I'm trying to think, well, is big red, and that's sometimes when I call on you, is big red not sending us enough attorneys? Are we not doing enough outreach? Are we not doing enough of this? And the reality is, is it simply is gonna come down to this, we're competing for attorneys and we're trying to get paid for attorneys, and that's all it comes down to. So I think that if we approach this with the priority being eight and a half percent as the goal. Regroup around numbers, once we have that on thirty-five to forty as a goal, to me, that would make sense. And it would conquer a lot of problems, I think, that we're currently experiencing. It is not predictive of future years what would happen because again. We owe it to the taxpayers to figure all this out, and in fact, it could be different in future years. But I think that if I were prioritizing my goals for us, it'd be in that order and with that kind of a cause and effect.
Can I, can I show you one thing with regards to going to an eight point five? Um, on this grid that I had created, if we scroll back up to the top. Someone had talked and mentioned that the comments, you know, are not being paid enough and this kind of thing, um. If you move and that the target hourly rate should be around twenty dollars. Which would put us competitive with regards to, um, you know, our surrounding community, um. So I did a comparison and we have no one as a comment A, so that, that's just. Move right there. So comment Bs, um, are currently making, um, eighteen ninety-eight as an entry level. But if you move to the eight point five, that puts them at the twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents. So that reaches your target level that you are, you know, requesting, so. I, that, that's just, and this is the thirty-five hour scale too.
Okay, um. That opens up a whole other thing and I appreciate that, cause I did ask you to do that. I, I think I, um, would like us to get to, back to the overall impact of eight and a half percent. Across the board, um, to see what that looks like with respect to. Um, well, with respect to the four Bs, but what we have would be good.
Him, you had a, uh, you did a, uh, a fiscal impact analysis, uh, the eight point five across the board.
Oh, yes.
You, you did it and you gave it to us.
It was only sent out at four fifty-three P M.
So, are you, are you, are you asking that, for that across the board or general fund?
No, I, I did it.
It's, it's, um, it's right there. No, it's not just general fund.
So, um, I was asked to do, um, an eight point five across, um. The, the levy funds and, and then, uh, the few that we mentioned quite a bit, so. This is, um, that result. And you can see the difference of, in the FICA and PERF with the grand total. So general fund. You'll see, it'll go from, you know, an increase of two twenty-nine million, so.
Wait.
What? Hold on.
And, and then the sheet that we have in front of us is the one after the changes that Councilmember Kim asked to move. Highway MVH down and to all.
Sorry, I pulled up the wrong one. This is the old one, sorry.
I think, uh. Well, Councilmember Kim asked us to do thunder.
Right, that didn't have the right numbers and I see that.
I did two and then I made an adjustment, I'm sorry.
There's a lot.
By the way, while we're waiting, just got a, uh, the, uh, message that the, uh, gas leak situation has been resolved.
Thank God.
Right.
No other details, but. Go about your business, is what they say.
About your business.
Okay, there we go. That's the updated version, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Now, does that health, do those health numbers take into account?
That takes in what was submitted originally, it will not, it does not reflect any changes that I will be making, so that number will go down.
Go way down, okay. So really, the general fund is, is obviously the big one and we're talking about a two point three million dollar increase in the general fund. If we go eight point five across the board.
Yeah, okay, I followed that. But you just added the difference in the, and the difference in the column.
I, I didn't hear.
Two point three six.
Yeah, the column labeled difference and then difference FICA and PERF. Difference is just the salary.
Yeah, that, that grand total makes it sound like it's a, well, that's how much the increase is, right?
No.
It's very.
So essentially, for folks watching at home, if you add difference and difference in FICA and PERF, that, that's the money we've been trying to find to do the eight and a half. By fund.
It's basically, it's those two columns, difference and difference FICA and PERF added together.
Those are the numbers we need to see. Those two columns.
So again, it's about two point three million dollars, probably two point four, less than two point four adding up all the.
Any question we have to work with?
Well, I don't know, we just made some changes, um. I made a change in the, the only change I made in the, um. Four B was to reduce the health budget because that, we knew what the bottom line was. Uh, and that leaves us about two hundred seventy-eight thousand surplus in the, uh, in the frozen levy. And of course, we know we usually have about a million dollars or so in, yeah, or two mil-, sorry, two million dollars in, um, reversions. In a normal year.
I mean, I still have not had an opportunity to look at a breakdown in the miscellaneous revenue. Um, have you seen a breakdown in that? Like, how much was actually added for? Uh, public safety, uh, no, how, how much was added for our lint and. Was that reduced any? Because, I mean, I understand and I appreciate the fact that the auditor. Uh, she's the one that has to derive it, what goes in that miscellaneous and her instructions are, as they always are. Uh, coming from the state to be very conservative with that. So are there any places where you've maybe been overly conservative?
Um, honestly, no. I, I was overly conservative initially. And I went back through with, um, Auditor Smith and, um. And provided more realistic numbers, um, just as a, a process. I'm, I'm always very conservative, so, um.
One of, one of my concerns is our cash balance is high, plus we have a lot of money in the rainy day fund. And even if we say take the highway stuff, that, you know, take that out of rainy day fund forever, our balances are still high. I do not believe in the future that we'll be sitting this flush with money because all this extra money come in from these other sources. That was, hate to use the word windfall, but ARPA brought money in, the, um, opioid brought money in, just here and there, things. You know, added up. I think this is our once, basically in a generation, chance to right-size this. I would like to think that we could, because I do believe COLA was less last year than it should have been, even though you gave one-time raises. Or one-time bonuses. The problem is we didn't raise the salary, so now we're sitting here with salaries below. And, and we, salaries below what they should have been if you looked across the board at COLA. And the issue becomes, we spent so much money on the, uh, on, on the Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. Uh, right-sizing of, um, of these charts and these job descriptions. That we're getting away from that if we don't keep up with COLA. And the reason I specifically eight, asked for eight and a half. Is because it took us back and erased the deficit from last year. So I'm very. I wouldn't tell you that we could do it if I did it in my heart, believe that we can do it without, without hardship.
Uh, do you know, have we been told yet what, um, the special distribution might be? With the income tax? I haven't, I haven't gone online to see, but I've been hearing from other council members in other portions of the state that. It appears that they already know what theirs is.
It, it's in there, it is in there.
Michelle, what is the sum of those blue numbers?
That is the total of the difference plus the difference FICA, PERF.
And then can you sum those?
Yeah, the sum of those numbers, that's okay. Try to be as big as possible.
Row or column, Sally, always all do a sum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Two point five million.
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent. Again, that does still include the health double budget.
Which will leave, yeah, so that, you know, I, that'll probably leave us around. Two million dollar paper deficit, which is pretty much in line with what we normally.
We've heard.
Are, and we always wind up with more money than, that we started with.
So, I, yeah, yeah, please do.
I'd like to call in Counselor Munson.
I ha- I have just, um, have an important but, uh, probably minor question in terms of the, the bottom line here, but. The probation department employees, um, as you know, have, uh, a state mandated, uh, COLA. Uh, that is different from ours and, um. It is two point seven percent for, uh, beginning probation officers and for others, it is six point one percent. And so this changes the amount of COLA. That the county would need to contribute in order to make their COLA equal other county. Employees at eight point five, um, and I don't know, uh, if whoever. Uh, did the calculations took this into account.
They did not.
Okay, it's, it's, it's only, it's a small amount, but I just would throw, I would throw that out there to you all.
But I, I don't think we ever agreed to establish that as a, as a general principle that we would always.
No, we did, no, we did not.
Stop there. I mean, we were dealing with a problem where they had some particularly low entry salaries.
Yeah, and their, and their state, what the state said, that last year was, I think I'm like. Yeah, and their, and their state, what the state said, that last year was, I think, like, three percent. And so the county made up the difference to take to five. Then this year, the state says, well, say, seven and a half. Well, you know, that, that actually then got them ahead so far, they're ahead. So, I just think we ought to leave it alone, and if the state's going to tell us what's to be, that's what it's going to be, and we can't just. Keep messing with what the state tells us, have to do with everything else.
Wasn't it seven point eight percent, seven point eight?
Well, seven, seven point eight, so.
It was.
It was pretty good.
It was seven point eight based on what the state set the year before.
That's exactly correct.
She's mentioning is the six point one, is, is the seven point eight minus that. One point six seven that we had given already, so, that's where the six point one comes from.
Right, and they know that because I had, I discussed it in detail with them, and there was no.
Correct.
Expectation of it being different.
Correct.
So, so the rea-, the reason we, we took that. Uh, uh, extra effort last year was to help with their, um, uh, very difficult challenges in filling positions. And attracting applicants, and, uh, this, this hasn't really changed. Um, I think it may have helped some, but, um, it's certainly not going to help if this, this declines.
Excuse me, Marty, I did leave out one very important, um, piece of revenue that we have not received yet, that is on the way. And that will be added to, um, to the general fund. And will help us out a great deal. That's the six hundred eighty thousand dollars that's coming from FEMA. We have not received that yet, but we, we, uh, have been waiting for it. And when it gets here, that will be added, uh, to, um, to our, uh, general fund. So, I, I know it's been backburnered because we've, Bree has been actually having to put on Boston gloves to work to get it. But it's looked like it's freed up now and it's on the way.
Right. Do you have something, Counselor Iverson?
I do, uh, first of all, that, this is like, uh, a fiscal budgeting drama, like, brand new revenue at the eleventh hour, that's, that's fantastic. But, that's, that's right, it's, it's very exciting. Uh, but the blue column on the screen, representing that two point five million dollars, I, I think. Uh, Councilmember Kim just mentioned something, and I, and I, I think it bears a little bit of, of repeating though, that. We, we now know with that two point five, that an eight point five percent increase. Is doable at this, at, at this time, so, it, I mean, all things equal, other revenues coming in later. Um, it's, it's interesting, and I, I do realize that someone just made changes to the four B. Uh, and it'd be interesting to look at, at, at that as well, uh, given some of the, the changes that are, are happening.
Yeah, I just updated the health number, that's, that's all, because I don't know what the other, other updates are, but.
Yeah, if.
Have you seen the subtle now, much as.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it on the web.
I have an odd question. How many comment employees do we have?
Good question.
You know, the thing is, our operating balances are still really strong, that's the thing, it's, um, you know, PS Lit. Still, it's fifty-six percent, even if we add the, uh, add in the, uh, eight point five cost of living increase, it's. You know, it's still probably going to be around fifty percent.
Yeah, I mean, generals forty-nine.
Yeah.
Health is now one hundred thirteen, of course, that's. Uh, state revenue coming in, but still.
So, what was that, what was the number in general, um, that you, uh, Kim, that, oh, you're doing something else, I'm sorry. Now I can add this myself.
Do you want the comment number, or do you want me to pull something else up? I mean, I have it, it'd just take me a second to put it together.
No, I'll, I'll put in what I was going to do. So even if we add that, uh, the eight, eight point seven, or eight point five percent to the general fund, for example. We still have a forty-two percent operating balance.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and that's the one point, or the, um. With the sum of the blue column.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Although, it seems to me we might want to remember that we have moved around a lot of things that. Might not be sustainable where we put them to, so, I'm not speaking out against the raise, I'm just saying. Um, we know we were counting on a lot more interest, uh, having. To do with that ARPA money setting there, and a couple of years that won't be there, and. If that sixteen percent was actually a sixteen percent of the total revenue, and if that total revenue. For the county was over two million dollars for half a year, and if it's a full year, that'd be four million dollars, and I took sixteen percent of that. What was that number I came up with the other day, it's like, yeah, it stood in my head, well, ten percent, that four million is four hundred thousand and. Six times four is twenty-four, so that's six hundred and forty thousand, uh, in revenue. But that doesn't mean that we were counting that six hundred and forty thousand in the general fund, because. That's split up amongst all the funds, because that sixteen percent was in a part of the total, and the total all gets split up differently. If I'm understanding that correctly, so. I, I can't see that far. Are you frowning like I don't understand it? I mean, please explain.
No, that's not what I'm frowning about. I'm frowning about the fact that, um. That I'm sitting here thinking about all the different departments who come up here and voluntarily gave stuff up that they really needed, like myself. I gave up fifty thousand dollars that I really needed, that I'm going to have to work next year to make up. That I'm negotiating right now with a contract to try to make that money back. That is my commitment level to, to. The people who work for me and the people who work in the rest of this county, and I think this would be different if we were struggling to pay our bills. But we're sitting here cash flush with a high savings account, and people who we are trying to retain. And we give them retention budgets, but we are going to pay somebody the day after the retention budget. Uh, is given to us, which is on September thirtieth, she's leaving on October second. October second, the retention bonuses do not retain people. What really do retain people are salaries that are livable. And usable, and that's the point I wanted to make. And I don't mean to pick on this one employee. But how would you like to sit here as the elected official and have to give a retention bonus, write that check out, knowing that person's getting ready to leave? Literally, in a few hours after that bonus is cut.
Well, we did the retention bonus last year as an effort to try to prevent people from leaving, and I don't recall you talking very much about us not doing it at the time. We're here at this level now, we appreciate the departments that have come forward, including yourself, about those sacrifices. And we're trying to figure it out. If we weren't committed to that, we wouldn't be sitting in here trying to figure that out. So I think we productively need to stick to trying to figure it out and move on down the road. It sounds to me like the eight and a half. Is sitting there as a, a, objective that it looks like we can reach. Am I wrong on that?
I believe we can.
Yes, um, honestly, I think we can, and, um. What I was asking about with the comment employees is the idea that. I'm still interested in seeing what else we can do, and, um. If we can do eight and a half percent for everybody. Do we still have room to then do a, on top of that? Flat bump for the entire comment grid?
What is a flat bump? What do you mean, flat bump?
Um, raise everything, you know, raise everybody up by a dollar amount, yeah, exactly, so. I, I tend to think about salary as opposed to per hour, but like, you know, a thousand dollar bump on all of them. Across the grid, and that. Helps the, you know, the comment situation that I think we're all aware of, which is. Those, those jobs are going to be the ones struggling the most to. You know, meet their needs. They're the ones most impacted by the inflation, and so I, I. Was asking how many positions that was, because of course, if it's a flat bump, okay, it's my new term, flat bumps. Um, and it looks like it's a hundred and forty positions, so that would be. A hundred and forty thousand dollars if we did a, a thousand dollars. Um, of course.
Plus the twenty-one percent for benefits.
Plus the increase.
FICA and PERF, yes.
Plus FICA and PERF, of course. Um, my point being, if we've, you know, if we all agree eight and a half percent is, is doable. Is there additional little room? And/or is eight percent a better number? And then we look at this, some of these other things like. Flat bumps. For certain folks. Or we still haven't resolved the SO attorneys. Changing from thirty-five to forty. So, I appreciate that we've, you know, gotten information and we feel comfortable with. Eight and a half across the board, if that's the only thing on the table. I just still feel like there might be other things on the table that we want to look at. Um. And that doesn't have to, I mean, I get it, it's getting late, so we can have that conversation. We can continue that conversation, but I. I feel like we shouldn't drop those points.
I mean, I'm, I'm certainly open to things in addition to the eight point five percent, although I'm more willing to. Go to the mat for the attorney, uh, salaries, because I know that's a, uh, that's also a serious issue, you know, they're not. It's maybe not the same issue as with the comments, but it is certainly an issue. It looked like Council Crossley.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, the lights are really bright in here.
They really are.
Very cautious right now, so, I'm, sorry for not saying much this evening, but I, I do agree with, um. Counselor McCam, I do think that we are, I mean. Auditor, um, and staff have done their job of trying to prove and show that we can get to the eight point five, it seems. Um, that our council staff has also done that, I, I think, I guess for clarification, um. If we are here with, if it seems to be that we. Are at the eight point five agreement, I guess my. What I'd like to do is try to move forward and see what we can do in addition to, um, public defenders and prosecutor. Um, office, as much as, you know, we don't like to have late meetings, we are here. Um, and they are also here, um, as well, and I appreciate them taking their time to do that, but I really want to see how we can get them. To that magic number as well. I know every department head has come through here and has vouched. And have gone through the, the motions. We saw that last year with the sheriff's office, the correctional officers. Um, I also want to circle back and say that I do think that we need to make sure that we are doing what we can. For our probation officer, um, in that position as well, because they too are suffering. Um, everybody, we see the, what we are doing in terms of lack of pay. People are going elsewhere, people are leaving, people are going many different areas, um, and choosing to leave this great county of mineral. So what is it that we can do, um, to make sure that we can get to this level, uh, what folks are asking for? And I just wish that it is the will of the council for us to see how we can make sure that we can get the public defenders and, um, probation. And, um. And also prosecutor's office, their desire at pay as well. I think it is important, I think it's necessary, I think we owe it to them. Um, as liaison for public defenders, I got a chance to sit in their office yesterday for just a little bit. And talk, and there were some very interesting things that were said, and things that relayed with, or stayed with me. Um, and continued to stick with me. I had a person tell me that they had a hundred and fifty-three clients. Um, that's a hundred and fifty-three bodies that they are always on, not always off. They are continually, um. Trying to do what they can, and that's not. A hundred and fifty-three clients doesn't also mean a hundred and fifty-three cases, that's a lot more. Um, I just really want us to try to do what we can and have this conversation. Um, as much as we can to try to get them to the level, and I know we are trying to do what we can. Um, but I just, I, I find, I think that we have the tools. Here, and I think we should just try to do it. That's just me.
I'll start with Counselor Hawk.
I, I just wanted to remind us that we have a lot of people who are paid with grants. So we haven't addressed what it's going to cost to cover those, are we talking, I mean, that's just in general, that's something we have to think about. That, a lot of people get paid with grants, they don't even know they're getting paid with grants, they just want their paycheck. So we need to look at what that's going to cost. Also, the highway department met with people from the. Council Legal Department, uh, discussed some of the things that they wanted, and we've never seen the results of that. So. Believe me, they haven't forgot they had the meeting and turned in the requests. So I'm, I'm, I don't want to leave anybody out of the equation. I'm not talking against any of it, I'm just saying we have to think about everyone.
Counselor McKim?
So, I, although I definitely agree with Counselor Crossley on supporting the public defender and the prosecutor. I'm not sure that we can do that tonight. I, I feel like it, there are too many moving pieces at once, and I wa- I want to at least set a platform. On which we can build. So counsel, I move that we update all budgets to include an eight point five percent cost of living adjustment.
Second.
In- including grants, or, or is that something to be determined?
Yes, and the, the, the department heads will have to come back to us if that presents an issue.
Did you get that, Michelle? So.
I did.
I say we go ahead and have a, a roll call vote. On this issue, point. Motion.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. And thank you for the work.
So I mean, it seems like from there, that will, yeah, that will give the office an opportunity to update all the budgets, update the four Bs. And then, then we can tell exactly what it will cost to bring the prosecutor and. Public defender attorneys to forty hours, and Counselor Wilt, it sounds like she has some, uh, uh, either alternate or additional proposal.
I, I purely meant it in addition.
That, right, that'll give us a chance, us to get more specific costs rather than always chasing the tail.
Hey, and I, I, I just, and I, I'm big on being clear on messages, I just.
I just want to point out that this motion that we've done, what we've just voted on, has moved that ball for a lot of people down the road towards which we have been requested. At the same time, there's still more things that have yet to be done, just like there has been since January, whatever day of twenty nineteen when I came into this job. And so we will keep moving towards that effort, and I appreciate everyone's diligence and effort towards that, understanding that we're doing our duty by the taxpayer of the county to provide the service to the people of the county and by doing good well by our folks. And we're moving in that direction, hopefully moving in a positive direction, but we moved a big direction just about three seconds ago, and hopefully the numbers bear out.
And President.
I, I feel like we're getting ready to end this meeting, so my question would be, if we want to discuss, uh, this budget discussion go on further, uh, uh, County Legal, are you listening?
No, I was, I was.
Okay. I mean, I know this is not like the official budget hearings, but I just wanted to make sure that if we say, okay, this is over, the state's not going to come back and say, well, what, you, you didn't recess the meeting, you adjourned it. Wish we got in trouble with that before. So can, can we adjourn this and pick it up at, at whatever next meeting, as long as we get it, got it all done?
Uh, the next meeting's already noticed, so I don't think that's a problem, right?
Right. I mean, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-sixth. I doubt very much that I will have everything ready at that point because I've got to get the grids out to all of the departments, and that's what I was going to mention. I got to get the grids out to all the departments. They're going to have to go into LAO and make those changes. I will not be able to do that. I can assist and that kind of thing, but they're going to have to individually go in and change each one of those lines to the new salary amount. So I'm saying maybe by the public hearing.
I think we're going to have to. I, I mean, I know it's hard, but I think we're going to have to. I mean, it's in everybody's, everybody has been asking for these raises. This is, they, this is a way to help make it happen, is to do this immediately. I, so I, I don't, I just don't think we have the, the time. I mean, I think we need to have the numbers by the next meeting.
I'll, I'll try. Yeah. I, I'm not going to promise it.
I, I mean, I know. It's not, it's not under your control. I, I totally understand.
Be, because I have, I mean, I have a grid ready to go, but I hadn't had it finalized because I didn't know where we're going. So if I worked on it tonight, not go, and that's one thing, I could get it out to them tomorrow and give them direction. So that's going to give them Thursday, Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday until we have our meeting, right? Or no, we got two weeks. I'm, am I ahead of myself?
No, I'm.
So it is next week. So, yeah, so. And some, some departments are at conference. I don't know if they're in, you know, that's what I'm saying. I will try to the best of my ability and with the, the auditor's help.
Thank you. Yeah, we have pushed my sex.
Yes, I'm. Okay. Um, well, you know, I'm, I just, I, that's a lot to ask of folks to get it done that quickly, but, um, it would be really helpful to be able to look at everything updated and, and have another conversation on the twenty-sixth, because then on the third, we have the public hearing.
Well, and, and keep, keep in mind, we are primed to have a conversation about comment and SO salary grids.
Yep.
We're, we're ready to have that conversation. We just need those, those, uh, those other budgets.
Indeed, um. Are there any other, I mean, I have council comment time on the agenda, so if there are council comments, I welcome them at this point. Yes.
Sorry, this is a question for Michelle. So, so do you have the, you have done grids with the eight point five percent increase, right? Okay, good.
Yeah, they're ready to a point. What, what it is, is, um, they have the four digit decimal point, and you have to go in and clean that up so that it rounds to the actual numbers that they will need. So I did make those changes. I wasn't sure where you were going to land. So all I have to do is clean up the four digits to two digits, and then I can get those out. That's what I'm saying. I can do that tonight before I go home.
And then, I mean, we can at least start, uh, noodling out the, the impacts of these other changes that are being proposed.
And then, uh, and then tomorrow, we'll be working with the health department, trying to get all of that cleaned up as well, so.
I know, it's a lot.
Counselor Hawk?
Um, at what time are we going to move forward to have, uh, the community corrections tax fund established and ready to go to, so that we can include that in our advertising? I mean, we've got that approved, so we could put that in on advertising.
Yes, you saw that the final approval came through. I think I forwarded that, or perhaps you were caught with anyhow. Um, so Michelle and I will, um, take a look at that tomorrow as well with the other things.
Is it the commissioners that have to actually formally establish the fund? Is that the way that works?
I'll need to take a look at that. I, I think it's, um, statutory fund. I don't, do they need ordinance?
They, they're not meeting next week either.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that and I'll.
Great minds, right?
Later.
Thanks.
Right. Other, yeah, uh, other questions, general comments, suggestions? Go ahead.
Great job.
Um, all right, and with that, um, thank you all. I appreciate all of the hard work that you are doing at this table, and I know when you're not at this table, so appreciate that and appreciate you all, because I know we've, we don't make your jobs easy, so thank you. And, um, I'm very hopeful that, um, next week we'll be able to keep moving forward on this, the issues that, um, we did not resolve tonight around comments and the SO attorneys grids. And with that, we are adjourned.